Ben, we're gonna go ahead when we come back into session and catch Mr. Vermin real quick.
Okay.
His items really quickly.
That's fine.
The golden boy always gets to go first.
Yeah. The dance. Well, yeah, that would be. Hey Dave, you've got, we're gonna come back into session at ten ten. Dave, you've got a couple items for us today for discussion.
I think the HVAC with the annex is the first topic, I believe, on the agenda. We've got bids, professional heating coming in on the lowest, the only got two bids coming in. The other bid coming in twenty-one and twenty-one five. And professional heating and cooling coming in nineteen seven sixteen for the HVAC system annex.
And this'll.
Yeah, ours. Professional heating, yeah.
And so this'll take care of all the heating and cooling.
Yes. Get the air conditioner and then we'll, air conditioners out of the windows, we can seal up the windows, you know, for, you know, for.
Security.
Security. If the roof is not open.
So we propose awarding professional heating and cooling coming out at nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen. We'll be taking that tomorrow for regular.
Okay, thank you for doing the work on that.
Yeah.
I had a question.
Yes.
On your North Agannex, back in the spring, Ken mentioned that it was in bad shape during the candidates forum. What else is going to be done with that building? I mean, what, the way you described it, some of the people described it, it was in real bad shape, not just.
We'll let Dave describe what we've done.
Structurally sound, that building's structural sound. It was just some of the cosmetic that needed to be redone, like the painting and approaches and security and stuff like that. We've approached all that now, we're on the tail end of the approach and all the security and.
So have you done a painting?
Yes.
The other, someone said the floor was bad.
Floor's been redone.
Okay.
The windows have been replaced.
Windows have been replaced.
Okay.
It's a nice building.
It's, it's, we spruced it up, but someday my emphasis is to have a new county annex that, you know, larger and more professional. But that's down the road away.
Yeah.
So we're sustaining what we have for this time being.
As of right now, the studies we've done, and I've talked to all the departments there, we're kind, I've looked at their needs and I've kind of coordinated to their needs that they can function on it on a daily basis. Long way to go, but we're moving forward to upgrade that on a daily basis.
Some of the office space has been reworked to be more accommodating, you might say, and soundproofed for confidentiality and things like that. It's holding this on for now.
Okay.
It's much better than, let's say, a year ago, and thanks to Dave for even that back.
Do you know when your next meeting is up at Christmas Valley?
The what?
When you're gonna have your next meeting up there at Christmas Valley?
October fifteenth.
Okay, thank you. Hey, thanks.
So Dave, you got another item for us?
Yeah, the other item is the paint. We're not forbid for that, we've ordered it to the bride builders, actually the ones that's doing the windows, they come in with the lowest bid, so we do it forward with them and then we got the contract in place to move forward on painting.
Okay.
How much is the price tag on the painting?
Eleven thousand.
In that ballpark.
Six eighty-eight thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it now.
So we'll take that as well tomorrow.
Do we have any, I've had a question, do you have any local bidders? We only have payers here in town, no?
Uh, we, I put it out and add on bidding, no one in.
No one in town bidding on it.
No one bidding on it.
Okay, Dave. Did you have anything else on the department updates real quick before we got you set in?
Uh, just removing all the windows, did you see the windows are going in? They're kind of working around, everybody's scheduled to put the windows in, so that's why you kind of see them and you don't see them and then you do see them, it's just like working on the daily, on the daily.
Seems to be going real good.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, a lot of positive comments. I'd really, because of passion, might make a little bit of update on Drew's reservoir.
Oh, yes, yes, Drew's reservoir, we've got it paved, all the campsites out there paved, looking really good out there. Community service went out there and did some organizing cleanup and it looks really good out there, so I recommend you guys to go out there and look at it if you guys get a chance, it's, it's very inviting, unfortunately.
I've been trying to catch a ride, but it just, the bus just goes right by me.
You have to get up before six in the morning.
I'd get up before six.
Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of water.
Yeah.
But it still looks really nice there and I think it's gonna be a great asset for the community to go out there and spend time out there, families picnic, they're at camp. We're gonna, still working on the signs to let people know that it is a campsite now, it's not just day use.
Well, and you'll notice that on the approach coming in, the first question we'll probably get is why didn't go all the way to the boat launch itself? There wasn't enough money, but this is an opportunity and the marine boat will be here in the next couple weeks and maybe another grant.
Just part of the media, you might mention that money, source of money, that's through the marine boat, isn't it?
The actual, the beginning, it actually is Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Just to do the Parks and Rec grant that I put in last year for.
As opposed to county general funds?
Yes, yes.
Maybe we can, hopefully sometime Jimmy can get out there and do a little bit of the story on that, follow up.
Also, we finished the paving out there at the airport, didn't we?
Yes, the Alex and F Airport.
Yeah, that's a huge project there.
The paving, the taxiway and the, with, not four width rotor, but for the airport where we're sort of building is, it's all paved now and finished. They're just wrapping up actually, end of the week, they're gonna finish the fence and the striping of the taxiway.
Will that close out the connector for again, four dollars?
Yes, yes, we're finishing up that and then we're, right now and next week, we're starting to connect five, because things are starting to roll. We're finishing up that we have to do a reevaluation on width on the engineering side of it, we have to get another, have another engineer look at it. And we're on the process to have them do that, just so we can get, we'll reconnect five and the F A A grant, so they go together, so, perfect.
And also, while you're on railroad, I've received multiple compliments on the wheat spray, they did a very good job this year.
Good.
Yeah, no, it's minimum, yeah, there's still a few coming in that I've got concerns, mainly not complaints or concerns, more than anything. The same area with the fencing too, we, there's still concern with the fencing, but we also got compliments on that, they, they actually see us out there doing something now and they, and they like that.
And the continuation of cattle herds, I know that's going on.
Also, as the railroad get their next grant, are they doing some of.
See, that's part of that connect five, that's addressed with the, on one forty there, the.
That railroad crossing.
Yes.
I had a gentleman come in yesterday talking about that crossing, so I double checked with the railroad folks and they said, we'd really, a temporary fix right soon until they can get geared up to do the permanent fix on that one forty crossing.
Did you get that call from me? Because I had a complaint on it.
I just had some gentleman walk in.
No, I mean, didn't I complain to you about it?
Is it on the phone?
Yeah.
You come in that way from Paisley?
I do. Thanks, Dave.
That's a better one. I got still accustomed, I've just moved my truck over one way to the other, that is a habit and I don't need to think about it like this. It took me a while moving it over to the left and I'll meet a police officer in route.
Mr. Vars?
We have a DHS agreement amendment.
Yes, it is, it'll be short and sweet. It's regarding the flexible funding and how they want to change the designation of how we use some of that funding from the intoxicated driver program fund to more of the alcohol and drug prevention approach. There's no, no change in any funding, just how they want us to.
Great, well, we'll take that up for approval tomorrow. And we have one other item.
Mm-hmm.
For the mental health expansion.
Yes, um, so I think there, there's a general understanding that we give you more room. I've spoken with all of you in the recent history and my proposal is this, that we, we get some estimates from local builders as to how much a stick built cost. Compare tho, those costs to what it'll take for. Yeah, the modular units for, for the similar structure. So, so much thousand and then we'll do a comparison of, of cost per square foot and the time it would take and that way it'll really give you some hard numbers.
As we talked about this, just individually, Ben, and I, I like this approach. So we're gonna be able to start with the current building that we have and the desire for modernization and usability within it and the additional space that's needed, but are we gonna predetermine the space that's needed by square footage? Are we gonna predet, are we gonna put out there for consideration what we need as far as space for the children's program and the different things?
Well, in, in terms of that, I, I think that these floor plans are, are pretty, pretty adequate for our needs for what we, we would use them for and so we would use it as a base model and say to whoever the local builders might be, how much would it cost for you to build a structure similar to this? I mean, sure, we could probably maybe some adjustments as needed, but.
Well, I, I didn't know if there was gonna be any additional value if, if you ended up thinking you wanted to go stick built route, attached, you know, built into the existing building for flow, for reception area, for all those things, you know, to.
If, if we did, if that proved to be the more cost effective route, then I would want me as the stick built to be, to act essentially in addition to the building, like you're saying, so we had more flow to it.
Yeah.
Instead of.
Well, and some design architect professional that, you know, we, we had some work done here at the courthouse that could actually, you know, that could work with the existing building for improvements and changes in the structure that, and then this new addition that would be built on. I, I think that'd be a good way to get, at least for you to know what, what's, you know, feasible to do. And when we talk about the cost, I hope we consider the depreciation cost in modulators versus the stick built.
Yeah, that would be incorporated into our final analysis.
Yeah, okay.
I hadn't thought of that. Point it out to me.
Yep.
I've been researching some different things and I just wrote down some things here that may help as you're moving forward. You probably should get the project, project scope, identify the deliverables, prioritize key elements, develop a timeline. Estimate, an estimate, an estimated budget range and list of internal stakeholders. And, and I, I think that will help guide what you really need there. You know, and then that would get you ready to get started on your RFP process, if you were there to where you was gonna put it out for bid in that part of it. But, you know, I, I Googled, I researched, I checked, I never, that's the way I came up with the, those guidelines there, try to figure out for us and here as commissioners, what we really want to see as it comes forward. So I'm talking as Brad right now, I don't want the other two commissioners to agree with those guidelines, but it just helps us as we make that decision here setting and with the public funds. Be sure if you're gonna be booking at residential, mobile homes, everything we do, I believe, has to be commercial. And so check with the building inspector, check with manufacturers and all that, if you would.
That's been done.
Okay, and the modular homes will pass for commercial.
Correct. So we, we just wanna make sure that we're gonna exhaust all avenues and we, we really need to, we really wanna move forward with this as soon as possible, you know, whether it's stick built or modular, it's just so that we can get services.
I will be the first to say, I know we have a need, especially as more money's coming in, services are expanding, we have a need, I'd just like to build it correctly.
Yep.
And work through Dave, how's that facility?
Yeah, I was briefly speaking with him yesterday, getting some ideas, and I will continue to rely on his expertise.
And just for the record, the, the funding of this, would be state or federal Medicaid funds that you can get able to pull over there at a time? As opposed to county general funds?
Correct. All that funding would go towards, obviously, the, the big picture of services, the individuals.
The funding wouldn't necessarily all be state or federal Medicaid funds, there's private fees for private services that we have done that we, we have made money on also.
And Vicki, you make a very good point, I, we, we do need some budget updates, the financial updates. No, I, I, I know you're shooting yourself for saving, but, but that is, that is exactly what as board of commissioners, we need to know, is what funds are flexible and what other funds that come in that can be put towards this. And that way, everybody's protected and so those kind of updates would be very, very appreciated.
I'll keep working on it.
And as you, it's bonds to deliver the services and part of that delivery of services is providing the suitable facility.
Yes.
And I think Commissioner Winters said it, and that I think the whole board feels that way, the expansion part, the need for more room is obvious, we, we support that, we've never not supported that, so. Okay, anything else, Ben, department updates while we got you in the.
Um, yeah, the major update that we have is that we, we do have a site review coming up at the end of this month, September thirtieth, October first and October second, and so we're really gearing up for that and.
Thank you.
Those are always fun.
I think Mary picked one thirty on October thirtieth for anybody that we're sitting.
Yes.
The exit interview is, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's thirtieth, first and second, but they want to meet.
Uh, they're meeting with you on first. First on thirtieth and then their exit interviews the afternoon of the second.
Okay, that's when.
Well, once that schedule's finalized, I can get you.
Yeah.
It's still kind of in flux right now, trying to.
There's a ton of things going on that week.
Yeah, we have some other thing with public health on a Monday.
Is that supposed to be on our agenda?
If it won't be here, it'll be over.
Oh, okay.
Other than that, things are going well?
If we got time to sit right there, you must be going fast, so get back to your office.
That's a good idea. See you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a two thousand fourteen fund exchange agreement from Mr. Vermilyu and we'll be in tomorrow to further talk about it, but essentially it is taking some federal funds, and this is an annual thing that happens, and the exchange does with the state. Ninety-four cents on the dollar gives us more flexibility and being able to utilize those, those funds, but Mr. Vermilyu will give us a, a complete update tomorrow. And our last regular item that I see, unless I've marked something too far, is Denise with public records request form.
Correct, we did some research on how other counties handle public requests for records, so I just wanted to have you guys approve a records request form. I did kind of consolidate it for other counties, but it does state what our fees are, department heads would be able to hand this out, but all records would come from the clerk. She's one of the authorities take money, so.
And you've worked with other department heads and officials and they're in support of this?
Mm-hmm, everybody seemed to be fine with it, legal counsel approved it, so.
So we'll take action on that tomorrow, though, thanks to this, same old, same old department updates, you got anything else you wanted to update us on?
I don't.
Okay, so we're down to lay us on updates.
I have one very encouraging piece on update. Regional Solutions met here in Lakeview last week, we was doing our prioritization for the next round of funding that hopefully the legislature brings down. There should be two million dollars in the year fifteen seventeen, I believe, or sixteen through eighteen, I forget what years it is. With that, we had submittals to the Regional Solutions group of priorities for us to prioritize and we came up with our selection that would be brought forward for that two million dollars. The one I worked on very hard myself is that right now we have a placeholder and there would be a funding come through one million dollars for natural gas in the Lakeview area, very encouraged about that. Four hundred thousand dollars for climate ID project, two hundred and fifty thousand for small communities technical assistance and three hundred and fifty thousand for a rural healthcare workforce training program through O I T, which this is, our region is Lake and climate. And even like the project at O I T could be so beneficial for Lake County in the nursing and in the practice and all that, not practitioners, nurse practitioners, whatever they really go as far as training over at O I T. So that, that was very popular throughout the talk, obviously the natural gas was supported, climate ID, the ID was supported. The two hundred and fifty thousand for small communities technical assistance, that can really help small communities like Bonanza or Paisley and those that are, all these regulations are coming down on from water to sewage systems and those type of things. And if they can leverage some assistance in those places, it can really help those really, really rural areas that just don't have the tax base for operations. So we had other priorities, the broadband was on there, it was right at the, the reason why broadband didn't get kicked up is because of its, it's still at, at, at Congress level, at US level, there's challenges going on there and the challenges all the way through. It was there, it was there, it was worthy of looking at some funding, but there was, there was no project immediate that we could put funding towards. So I think that one is Commissioner Kestner and all of us worked on that, maybe the next round of funding might be for that one, just get a study in there. So, and I, I can't remember the other one right off the top of my head, but we had for the Lake climate region, we had good project and we continue to do that as far as the communities as a whole, Lake, both. Climate is always sort of envious of Lake County, because we, we all work so hard on getting the project here, yet they're, so I'm pretty excited about it, obviously, so.
Oh, I think that's great, a million dollars for that natural gas is huge. Now, did you wanna talk about, I got a, an email from John James and Susannah yesterday because I live in Paisley primarily, I know you are a rep for Regional Solutions, but about the Paisley meeting, you're probably not gonna be in attendance for that, is that correct?
Which meeting is the?
The eighth at Paisley of October.
I don't have a thing written down, what is the meeting about?
John just said the Regional Solutions Group is going to be meeting at Paisley on the eighth.
Of October?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Our next meeting's the fourteenth of November as a whole board.
Okay, well, they've got, they've got a hand, they've got a hand, I'll, I'll forward you that again. They had a handful of things that they were going to do there, I asked them to, they asked and I asked them to go ahead and invite the superintendent.
Okay, well, well, and maybe it comes from, there was a project that none of us got on this round of funding that we all, you know, the rural communities like Paisley are so, so tough to get them at the table all the time because everybody's working on the council and everything. The Paisley geothermal to the school project wasn't, wasn't there and so I brought that forward in our meeting on Thursday as, oh, this project didn't get put in, there was no application for this project, but it's had the feasibility study, but it's had the things done and it would have been a good project. So I don't know if that's what stemmed the, the thought for some regional solutions being able to be there.
I'm just looking here real quick because they have a list.
I think it, I've been catching some of the emails that just originated just a few days ago. You have Susannah Puncoff.
Yeah, and it, it could be based around that or based, based around the money that's gonna come on because of their Paisley, the city of Paisley, when they went out on their water treatment or sewage treatment, one that came in way high. And so maybe it's gonna be based around some of that discussion, don't know.
Yeah, they've asked us to use more water because now we're on per gallon usage.
Per gallon.
Yes. We're paying for the new system.
Well, when you go to the store, you pay, right there, you're drinking water, you pay more per gallon for water than you do gas, I mean.
That's fair, so.
Dollar a bottle.
This came from the cooler, so.
Okay.
Originally from the store.
Yeah.
Anyways, I'll, Dave sort of hit the cruise thing and very encouraged about that, I'll, that's enough, ladies, and update.
Okay. I'll just add in, I think you're both very well aware of the action legislation, proposed legislation back in DC is supposed to happen this week, I don't know which day for sure.
Is that Ron Martin's?
Yes, on the SRS, care for schools and the payment with a tax legislation to make Pilt and SRS both mandatory, permanent and SRS would be funded at the two thousand eleven level under this legislation. An increase to a hundred and fifty percent of what that level was, Pilt, it will be funded at a hundred and fifty percent of its current level. I've been sitting in on the conference calls nationally with the Pilt Working Group, seems to be gaining a fair amount of traction within the, the counties across the nation, although there are some, some small little blips on the, the screen, but most of those are getting taken care of. Senator Wyden's staff agreed that they could make some minor adjustments to the proposed legislation, it's mostly in the formula and in the population cap and so that's, that's being added to that. I've been in conversation with the fellow commissioner of ours from Jackson County, Commissioner Doug Brightenthal, who I was asked to attend the Pilt fly-in or the, the Pilt and SRS meetings back there, there's about twenty-five county officials, county and school officials, they're there right now. I told him I couldn't be able to go this year and I was talking to him last night, he's there a little bit early, but a lot of things that kind of tie together from the public land management and the, the separation of how counties and schools are compensated is going on. He had some favorable reports, he was able to meet actually with Speaker of the House's Chief of Staff yesterday and they had a real good conversation, his, his view of things really well in those discussions. So we're, we're looking forward to a true healthy forest, I think it's H R fifteen twenty-six, that's the House version, getting consideration in exchange, you might say, for consideration for the Senate's proposal on how counties are compensated through the Pilt and SRS program. So I'll keep you informed of how that kind of turns out over the next little bit, we're talking major financial security. We're talking major financial security for roads, schools, and counties' services.
No pressure, just bring the money home.
Yeah.
Well, I got, I'll back up to last week, attended a M O D A session in Portland. I wasn't sure what the true agenda was. It was kind of like bringing some project proposals back off M O D A. Given Oregon Education benefit for three million dollars to put out grants across the state. They've already distributed roughly half of that, mostly western Oregon. Pan and Curtis said, when, we need to be looking at eastern Oregon, so she asked me to attend this meeting. So I spent a lot of time leaning projects, ideas, because it was presented that that's what we're going to do, big project. Turned out to be just an intro, get to know everybody, and I made it. So I came back, did a little tear room, I texted the head honcho. Am I supposed to bring eastern Oregon or just Lake County? He said, you're there for Lake County, thank you. Now, let's get a project. So there's a hundred, one point five million dollars left on the table. Won't be able to come up with that, but it is some match money. But on the governor council, early learning this afternoon, we bringing that with the regional achievement collaborative program that the state has, and trying to get folks to gel together some meaningful projects that complement each other, interrelated with children, medical, denture. Find out what's going on and form a package, and put a project proposal back to the gentleman of M O D A. I hate going to Portland, I have to. It costs too much, and it's hard to get a part in space.
Well, you, you know, Ken would mention that. They really need, and we all have this challenge, not issue, and they have those meetings. They, they really need to make sure that, that we're fully aware of what they want to, the outcomes of that meeting to have to be. Sometimes being there in person is very, very important. Some things we can do it by phone, but doggone, some of the people that are in that area just don't understand.
I constantly put ham into others. I relate not so much to cost, cost is cost, but to dead time. And that's one day of private, not getting anything, but I do have a mission going. It's one day driving back, not getting anything accomplished, except when shit's happening. And I'm getting that message through to them.
It's too bad you couldn't actually hijack them for a little bit, you couldn't even read, so they could actually experience that dead time and then, you know, the distance, because they, it, it's hard for them to relate. I know I've lived in cities, and it's been the same thing, they just don't understand, but we don't live next door.
How many times do we hear they come to Lakeview and they say, I'll never make that trip again?
Yeah.
But the expectation of us to make the trips is quite often.
When I lived down in Utah before coming here, it was two and a half hours to go to any place. Well, it's worse here, it's three and a half hours to Ben, six hours to Salem, seven hours to Portland, seven hours to Ben.
So if there's, and I don't know, can this, as you're looking at bringing a project forward or try and leverage some of those dollars, can, can this be brought in with early learning and through our hub?
That's essential.
Well, you know, sometimes there's power with our hub where we are with, unless there's power there that may help you leverage for a project, maybe. So.
That's what we're going, hopefully, rainstorm or more yet out of this rental meeting of the Lake County Council. Try to get a handful of folks as a committee to work on it.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, the gentleman, Jim Bowley, the vice president, he said, you was requested specifically. And we know where you like early learning kids, education, go home, bring us a project, and we're going to. But getting that project pulled together, we're going to have to go to the committee, working on that. Broadband is always up there. We have Jim and I and Bill Wertz have a schedule of a phone call with one of the providers tomorrow. I've heard mixed stories, whether about provider or stool, and they were not so good, and I'll come on.
Who's Jim?
Paul. Jim Paul.
Oh, I'm in Bob.
Okay.
And Bill Wertz.
Gotcha.
Next Monday, I'll be in Burns. We have a regional community advisory council that part of our CAC, it's a regional group. And somebody named me as E O L A, I mentioned that before, it's a spinoff five, five oh one C three from E O C C O to solicit, to help provide services to the different communities, activities. And we can be hosting a conference in Central River later next month, where we are flying and dining some, some funders. That's about it for now. Oh, yeah, there's, I just picked up on something, there's a sage grass policy meeting in Seattle. And I haven't had a chance to pin down the date on that, but it's, it's kind of coming out of this Sage Con. And if it was in the planning section, I need to talk to Garland, who knows about it. But it may be something going to the state legislature, related, related to sage grass habitat.
I need to ask you to give me some bullet points of conversation, because I will be back, as I mentioned before, it's a while from now. The end of October, a whiff of meeting, we had a call yesterday. And I'll be there with the health policy, the B L I director and director of Fish Mala. I think it'd be good to be able to have some meaningful questions to ask them from you, since you've been involved in the sage grass all along, to maybe move us in, in a positive direction from, from that standpoint, so. And as you think about it, we've got a month and a half to deal with that.
I'll get with Steve, Steve in Key Cock. That comes up another thing, because I went to the M O D A thing, there was a tear between going to that or to the B D B U working group. Because what they were discussing for two and a half days is special destination. I can't have bet a few of the members, well, my thoughts on us, but that M O D A meeting, being there in person, taking the opportunity to have rank power. But what I understand in front of a few folks, what happened on the B D B U, there's that, there's two, two themes. Everybody was kind of agreeing to, one is wilderness, one is conservation area, national conservation area. And that's what, I've used the keyword you used about three years ago, heritage conservation. And they got that outreach on the table. A working ranching.
Culture and heritage.
Culture and heritage. So I haven't talked to the leaders of that group yet. That's on my list today, depending on more detail, what actually transpired and what's there.
Well, and in that, in that same vein, Commissioner Winters and I had the opportunity to not only visit with our B L M, global B L M director, but we got to visit with the associate state director of the B L I. Were able to give her a lot of homework assignments on, on these issues. And we mentioned that you were our lead on the sage grass issue, that situation.
I've accumulated a lot of recipes in the past year.
Yeah, there you go.
This, this Friday, just going to plan real fast, this Friday I'll be at Warner Creek Correctional Facility, sitting on a panel in the morning on Friday. I won't be in the office Friday morning, afternoon I'll be available.
Oh, we, I'm glad we were talking about current, Commissioner Kestner's, we're all aware of it, but Justin from E P A, the director, will be here tomorrow at eleven, I understand.
We have it on our agenda here.
Right. Yeah. I was looking, I was looking at the calendar.
Oh, okay, well, and that was, I thought we might want to go, our agenda for tomorrow will go faster.
Yeah.
Well, Justin forwarded this on to you, it's environmental groups appealing the petition against the sustainable classification from A T.
Yeah.
I had a question, I had a question. So I can leave, you guys can continue your conversation. Tomorrow we have an executive, executive session scheduled, and could I ask what the, what the H category is?
I think H is litigation.
Yeah, H is litigation, I'm sorry, I thought you said age, I was going age.
Age.
Is to discuss with our attorney either ongoing litigation or potential litigation topics.
Okay, thank you.
So also next week, since we're talking about that, I do have, Denise, I think you've got it on the calendar, all ten counties that are making up the new Oregon consortium alignment, Central Oregon corridor, will be meeting in Bend on the twenty-fifth. And that Pilt Working Group conference calls on the twenty-third, I'll just take it in here. I'm going to ask Commissioner Winters on that day, it starts at ten A M. You know, they've got so many people across the nation to coordinate with, depending upon our work sessions and what's going on. I'm going to excuse myself at ten A M.
Ten A M is COIC.
What date is that, that's twenty-third?
Next Tuesday. I thought they were here first.
They asked for ten o'clock because they will be traveling that day.
Dang. Well, we'll talk about that later.
I, I am here on that day, twenty-third.
Okay. Anything else before us today? We'll adjourn our work session at, oh, before we adjourn our work session, Commissioner Winters asked that we review our adjournment.
I believe I have one item to remove, criminal health expansion request. Delete. Other than that, I have no changes at this time.
Okay.
We have several hearings tomorrow for process.
Okay.
All right.
We'll go ahead and adj, adjourn our meeting at eight minutes to eleven.